Good morning, January 7th, 2024, and welcome to the first meeting for, oh, it's 2025. My pen said I repeated what you just said. No problem, 2025, January 7th, the first meeting of the new county commissioners board. So first welcome to you guys and I'm really glad to have you and this will be an interesting jury. We'll make our way through it. So we'll call the meeting to order noting that all three commissioners are in session. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our first order of business is election of the chair and vice chair for 2025. So any discussion or suggestions? I'm gonna start off. I want to make a motion. Okay, I will step down. And suggest Ron Irig as chair for 2025. Yes, it'll be great.
I second the motion.
So motion and a second, any discussion? I appreciate.
I will try to do my best. It's been several years since I.
Chair. We're just gonna throw you into the hot seat. So motion passes, Mr. Irig for chair. So would you like to switch now and do the motion for vice chair?
No, I'd be happy right here to do, I'm so moved for Todd to be vice chair for the year 25.
And I go second. I don't get to step down anymore inside. It's an odd one, I have to unwire that. Yeah, so good, okay. All right, thank you.
All right. So I need to move.
There it is. Yes. You're telling us, so. Sorry. We behave the country. So we did not, did we not vote on either motion? So for the motion for Mr. Irig as chair, we would need all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I am for the motion for Todd for vice chair, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion's passed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Cleve.
Okay, I just ask everybody to bear with me. Literally. First, next items, approval of the business agenda. Discussion.
Then I will second the motion. I got lost.
You can make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pass the business agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded to pass the business agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion passes. Next item is public comment. Ask people, please come forward if you're in the audience. People on Zoom, please raise your hand. Please state your name. Once called by the chairman and you have three minutes to comment. So I'll start inside. Please come forward.
Three or two?
Three minutes. And then the music goes on.
Yes.
Mark Dowport Water, I'll be here on Netflix. Need to change your names. Okay, tomorrow, Thursday, the January 9th at 7:00 PM at the Dellsport Community Council. Martin Vander Vanden of Surround Architecture is gonna be making a presentation of phase one of the development in this, they call it Circle T right now, the Iceland property. Scott Dixon and myself met with these guys, oh, six to nine months ago and it's it's kind of been quiet for that long, but now they wanna make it public, start getting the citizens educated in what it's gonna be. I think the first phase is gonna be like 300 homes. So Scott is the contact for Mark and that company. And we will be, I guess he's gonna be open for questions on Thursday night, so.
Scott Dixon.
Yes, Scott Dixon. He has been working with him and had close contact a couple of times a week. So I think it's gonna be a great project for Dallas. Our, all the stuff that's been talked about for how many years may actually happen. And I'm looking forward to it. So anyway, that's hopefully some of you guys can make it and and we'll get this thing rolling. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, I plan to be there. I'll do.
I'm Roger Nichols.
Roger Nichols online.
Yes, I'd like to start off by congratulating everybody for starting a brand new year and a brand new commission. And would like to ask each of you to outline your top number one project for the year. This is the one that you, you have one magic wish, solve one problem, get one thing done. Let me know what's top of your list. Be kind of interesting to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak? Okay, go to online, Rick. Wild.
Yeah, good morning, Happy New Year. This is Ricky Zixon from Blount. I would like to welcome Commissioner Andrews and Irig to the Clickitat B O C C and hope that you are on the side of the people as well as taking your oath of office to heart and follow the R C Ws and W A Cs. Todd, I have met you before and I know you have the taxpayer's interest as your top priority. Ron, while I've not met you, I sincerely hope that you are here to protect every taxpayer and voter in Clickitat County. Today I asked that the character franchise agreement be withdrawn immediately. I also asked that the B O C C immediately start Thursday workshop so the citizens of Clickitat can be informed of upcoming business that you are working on. Now, as a Clickitat County taxpayer and voter, I really look forward to 2025 and the work of the people getting done in a timely manner. That's all I got. I gotta get off to a meeting, but I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, we'll go back into the audience if anyone would like to speak. Please, Mr. Johnson.
How's everybody today in this new year?
Good.
Just a couple of things, I'll be real quick about this. I sent a request for attendance for this month's meeting next Monday. And when I haven't received zero, I've received zero response, so I was just wondering where that's at.
All right. Planning to attend, planning to bring the Public Works Director, I believe, Mr. Rob Van Clevescan also attend. And I don't know if two board members or one board member, but we're planning to attend and just have not got back to you. I'm still trying to figure out how to turn the computer on, Mr. Johnson.
I'll take that as enough notification so I can write my minutes.
And I sent you an email this morning, but it went to staff, it went to the secretary for the community council.
Okay.
Okay.
And just, just want to thank you for, you know, for supporting. That's really important to us as we start to make things a little better around there. There are, this week, really cool projects kicking off with the high school students, community volunteers, and one of their council members, and that's with the P U D on the street lighting. A full, complete survey of the street lighting, poll locations, poll numbers, everything's gonna come in line with the G I S system that P U D uses, and then we'll be evaluating for a, starting of a replacement program for LEDs to get rid of the barn lights and the burnouts and the old mercury vapors and all the mismatch that exists down there. So it's pretty exciting that the seniors are using their, their required time, public service time to do such a project.
And that meeting's Monday?
Monday at 5:30. At the school in the auditorium. So, and I, I laid out in the request some of the items that are bubbling around town. There also has been some tremendous work done by individual in town for, yeah, for the Feral Cat Program. So we're making a real good headway there too, so starting to look better every day. I want to say it's great to see new members and great to start the year and thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you and thank you for sending the email.
You're welcome.
And for your volunteer and your other member voluntary.
Yeah, it's starting to gain a little steam. It's slow, but we'll make progress this year, I think, and start improving. Awesome. Thank you.
Well, see you on Monday.
You bet.
Jean.
Jean? Or is it?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jean Patterson and I live in the Snowden community. I just wanted to say welcome to the new commissioners. Welcome back, Mr. Irig. Also, just starting the conversation, this is in particular for the two new commissioners. Just wanted to see what your thoughts were and hear a little bit of information about affordable broadband. That's one of the projects that's been near and dear to me for years since I started working, since I got to the area. And so I just wanted to hear what your thoughts were about bringing more affordable, reliable broadband to Clickitat County. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jean. Anyone else? Anyone else online?
On at the top.
Mr. Rizzi.
Good morning, commissioners. I want to congratulate you on your first day, first meeting office anyway. And I really appreciate Ron and Todd for stepping up. I know that's gonna be a really big job, but I'm sure that you guys can handle it. And I appreciate you working for the public and make sure that all your constituents are taken care of. And I look forward to working with you guys in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks for mentioning last week about the meeting also this Thursday, Mr. Rizzi. Appreciate that.
You bet.
And anyone else in the meeting room? Okay, online. Kaylee?
Good morning, commissioners. I am so excited to see you all up there. And I just kind of wanted to say hello. You're gonna get to know me a lot because I'm trying to watch every video and I will be in your ears. But yeah, I'm just looking forward to learning more about what's important to the new commissioners and even knowing kind of what Lori's goals are for this year. I would just like to put on the top of your radar because I know we're gonna, it's gonna be a little work in progress, but don't forget about the short-term rentals. And it would be a good way to generate some income for our county. And I won't stop reminding you about that. So thank you guys for stepping up and working for us and I can't wait to see how this year goes. All right, that's it for now.
Thank you, Kaylee.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Just trying to remember.
Yeah, I know. It's a bad thing. I can't even remember your name and it's even plastered. This is even bad. You know, it must be getting younger, right? Andrew Smith, Clickitat County. Oh, I can remember something. So it's a Happy New Year. We're moving forward. Yes, I'm, want to hear all three of your goals. This would be exciting. I even want to hear from our finest angeler here. Hopefully Sheriff's Department comes in and talks too. Quick reminders also, you know, solar panels, battery storage, all this exciting stuff, taxes, all of Atlanta just never ends, does it, guys? The list is long. Hopefully all move forward. And I am looking forward for a full year of excitement. I can tell it's gonna be a new adventure here and it is so nice to see all three of you smiling and talking together. It is a nice thing. It's a new change. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Andrew. Any else in the meeting room? Not seeing any, anyone else online?
I have Sherry.
Sherry.
Happy New Year and happy new Clickitat County Commissioner Squad, whatever you are. Yeah, or Commissioners. So I, I've commented a lot in the last four years. I started out with being, you know, concerned about the under canvas project. And I live here in Houston, right, right at the Houston Street and Oak Ridge intersection, basically. So I had a lot of concerns about traffic there. And if any of you are familiar with the Houston area and the two rafting companies during the summer, it gets quite busy and and I, and I, you know, I'm concerned for people's lives and that's the end of that, just that that road, I, I was concerned about that. And I was quite involved with the lawsuit and got quite discouraged about how the people had to reach into our back pocket to pay to try to fight off something. We said, hey, 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 not here, not here, you know, like this'll hurt, this'll hurt people. So I guess I say that story real quick in my three minutes to say that, you know, y'all have sat down one day and you said, you know, I would like to be a public servant. I, I would like to run for office and you, you applied, you went, you know, online, you registered, you got signs, you went out to the community, you asked us to vote for you, you asked us to trust you that you would represent our, our wishes, the people, your constituents. And so you pretty much really asked to be in this position. And the last term, not to bring up bad things, but to call the elephant in the room. The last commissioners were kind of talking to us, people who comment that we were rude and we're mean and we're abusing staff and we're just bad people and that, you know, the elephant in the room is the comments being made that maybe we should just take away public comment. Well, you know, we're already limited and we don't have a discussion. We just have, we say and then you say. But really, our, our government, our nation was formed on the people creating a government. And I look at it as a friendship, a partnership. You know, you come to the people, you say, hey, what would you like in your communities and what wouldn't you? And you ask for our, you know, public hearings and comments and on CPAs and all that stuff. So in, in moral status, I would hope that you people who have decided to take this great challenge and responsibility on to be a public servant really takes this serious. And when decisions are needing to be made by your board, that you, you look at yourself in a moral way, you know, and what, you know, this whole NIMBY thing, but yeah, what about you? You know, you having a NIMBY in your backyard, you know? So when you make decisions, I really hope that you base them on loving your neighbor as you do yourself and that dangerous things don't happen. I hope that you continue with public comment. Government's supposed to be transparent and to work with the people and I come in peace and I know a lot of people come in peace. And we hope that this will be a peaceful year of a partnership with the people and caring and having decisions being made. Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Sherry. And I too, as, as on the board, I just ask people to be respectful. Whether it's to employees or whoever it is. I very much want public comment to continue. But people need to be respectful and treat people with respect. It's okay to have differences of opinions. I'll just say that. But thank you very much for your comments, Sherry. Anyone in the room? Anyone else online? Ask one more time? Okay, not seeing anyone, we will close public comment at this time. I'd probably like just back up a little bit and probably New Year, probably kind of explain where I'm at. I believe this is time for public comment. I don't believe it's time for Q and A constantly. I would hope people would reach out to each board member individually. If you've got a lot of questions, I don't want to spend a lot of time going back and forth on Q and A. It's, it's what it was when I was here 28 years ago, it's public comment, it's for the public to give us comment about what's happening or their opinions on what we need to do. I would much prefer like we did today, we got something, let's talk to people directly at the time. But that's me. I, I want to tell the board how to react or not to react, but I'm just saying where I'm at. On public comment.
Do you mean talk to them at the time like?
Yeah, I have no time. I don't have a problem at the time. Like when Mr. Johnson asked the comment, I sent this to you. I'd rather respond to him right away than, I did receive the email, I just didn't respond. And I'm not saying to make it lengthy, but it's public comment. But it's how you want to respond. That is up to you.
Whereas in the past, they've had 30 minutes of public comment and then.
I waited to the end.
And I think that was unusual in the past, like Mr. Irig said, I don't, I hadn't seen another board before that ever commented back during public comment. Unless they were in the room and had a specific issues where they could talk face to face. But they allow a public comment, but didn't, until this board, this last board, they didn't comment.
And that was their style.
Right.
I, I, you know, that, that was up to them. I'd rather try to quickly respond and not spend half hour staff's time.
And so Lori, why, why did, why did you guys do it the way?
It was that way when I came on board. They've done it for two years already. So we just continued till now.
And did you, do you know, do you know, was it, was it so public comment was 30 minutes and then so that it didn't expand in the time?
They did not have a timeframe on it.
Okay.
And it expanded way past 30 minutes sometimes into our workday. Yeah. Starting at 1:00, you would open the business meeting in the afternoon and it started at 1:00 and then public comment ended at 1:30. And then it was up to the commissioners whether they, you know, responded back. Because usually right at 1:30 is when public hearings, public meetings are mid-opening starting. So a lot of times they ended at 1:20 and then give 10 minutes to respond.
And I'm not telling the board how to respond or not to respond. That's each of you. I'm just saying for me, I'd rather have communication more direct. And I'm getting to a point where I don't remember. I gotta write it all down, honestly.
And really, all the comments today were about welcoming us and then asking if we had specific goals or something, do we want to?
Well, and I'm hoping to later in the agenda, I would like to have, call for a workshop next week. And for us as a board to discuss our goals together, because I may have a top goal that's different than your top goal or your top goal. And if we all come to a consensus that let's focus on A, B, and C. You know, like mine would be, you know, I need to get on top of the budget and understand the budget, but that may be different than you. Or you, you know, like STDs was mentioned. I think that's something important, but is that important? But the whole board wants to work on.
Short, short-term rentals?
Yeah.
Yeah, so for, just, since they've done it this way in the past and just kind of to comment since we're, since we're new here. And then maybe Lori has new goals for this year. But overwhelmingly, I was told by, by Lori and by Jake, try and have a few items that you really, are really important to you and focus on those because it's, and that's what I've seen. It's like drinking out of a fire hose as, as we've come on, you know, the, the weeks before we were brought on. And then since then, you know, you're just getting caught up to speed. And so there's a, a lot of information, a lot of information corne over. Because it's, I'm kind of a take it all on kind of person, like, well, you can't, you can't prioritize just one or two things. But I, I see the importance of that is because if you want a few things for sure to get done, you focus on those and then of course you have to do everything. But if I had to focus on a few things, because I, I think it's, it's kind of like a 10-year plan and me and Ron spent a lot of time talking about that's overarching. I think that'll help with the citizens kind of looking at us in a good light. If they look at us, see us talking about things way in advance, then they have time to prepare and to plan. And so the, the comp plan has been mentioned numerous times. Having good citizen input and that means we need their input early and not right at the end. Because I do, it's very important to me, the individual freedoms and personal property rights. And so in that, I think we'll have to earn that trust. A lot of people are talking about like, oh, this new board and everything will be rosy and sunshine and rainbows. And I think we'll, we'll have to earn that trust and we'll have to move forward and be visible so they can see what we're doing far in advance and so that we can prove ourselves to be a board of the people, for the people and by the people. So.
I'll do a quick answer to pretty much everyone online that asked the question today. And thank you for supporting our board and the new commissioners. I am really looking forward to this relationship. I think we're all three going the same way. What I have to say for my priority is I, that would be very hard. I came into this with my two seatmates with a very heavy backpack. And there's some very technical, very destructive, very important things in that backpack, such as getting the short-term rental thing, the battery storage, the solar, the comprehensive plan. I can't let any of those down. I have to carry them forward into this board and then we'll move them forward again. And I really look forward to the idea that you guys want workshops and public meetings. Because a lot of the problems from the past, I can tie directly back and share with you. When we didn't have a public meeting, we didn't inform someone, that's upsets the apple cart and then you have a citizen you're trying to deal with because they weren't informed. And it's crucial that we get a good working order together. So I look forward to those workshops.
Amen.
Yeah, and I appreciate it, Todd. We're just gonna have to work together and agree disagree and move forward and get things done. I appreciate. So we'll move on. Next item, department update.
Yeah.
Oh, consent agenda, excuse me. So there's seven items on the Senate agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with seven items.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Here, no discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, Scott.
See you Monday.
Thank you.
Morning, commissioners. Lori Anderson, CEO planners with you. Happy New Year. I noticed the seat arrangement changed. I missed the first part of the meeting, so congratulations, Your Honor. I'll go through my update here, then I know we have a couple of other items on your agenda right afterwards. Lori's here to help, especially with the planning commission. Lori's here to help especially with the planning commission appointments, um, as well as the pack. And then. Any additional comments or questions you might have on the updates I have today. Uh, the board of adjustments currently has no applications pending. We don't have anything in the queue, but. We do have two that have been through pre-applications and. Uh, the time I've been here, I think there's been an increase in the. Um, interest of of names in events that I think are well known and have been going on for years, but without proper permits. And so those have come through code enforcement as a result are coming to us. And so we're gonna be dealing with at least two of those venues. There might be a third one even. To get them through, well, to apply for condition use permit and to go through the appropriate channels. So we're following up on those. Those are likely to come. The next couple of months.
Right.
Uh, planning commission, there's a lot going on. I'll first update you on the Monroe Wilson rezone, which was last year, which the new commissioners, I'm sure you. Tracked a little bit. It was in the snow area. It was, um, there was quite a bit of opposition to this rezone. And it was actually, it was not appealed legally. The local city was not appealed, but there was an appeal made to the growth management board. Um, outside of that process, that was referred to us and denied because uh, we're not a growth management county. There are certain things that can go to the growth management board, but they're very limited.
But thank you for clarifying that because when you said I went to the growth management board, I didn't think we adopted.
No, so there are a few things that still had critical areas ordinance and a couple other environmental type ordinances, but not uh. Not a reason, wouldn't appropriately go to them, so they rejected it, so that zone change stands. January twen- we've got a lot going on with planning commission, very busy, which makes it one of our next agenda items, it's also more important to make sure that we have people on that that commission. Uh, public hearing on the twenty first for the floodplain ordinance update. This is a required update. For by FEMA in order to keep the counties floodplain insurance. So it's very important that we get this done. This we will be pushing to be a one meeting item. There should be nothing controversial, it's adopting the new maps. Um, there's nothing we can really do about any of it, but we do need to adopt it. It needs to get to you by, I think, February fourteenth, but Valentine's Day.
Yes.
In order for to make sure we can maintain county wide flood insurance. And then we'll also be having our first public hearing on the critical areas ordinance that night. Um, we've received some comments from several state agencies. We actually went over the, some of those from Fish and Wildlife last meeting and a couple other agencies. There's a few that the board, uh, commission did not agree with the comments and it's not following through at this point, but. They'll be brought up again at that meeting. All comments will be considered and then of course open to the public on on the twenty first. February eighteenth, the next one, it's potential continuation. I don't expect the commission to necessarily make a decision on the. Critical errors ordinance that night in January, they might, they certainly could. But I would anticipate that they could either continue the hearing or at least a deliberation discussion until February eighteenth. And then that'll also be our conference of plan kickoff meeting uh, with with commissioners. Solar and battery energy storage systems ordinance. The first step in that is Evan, who is hired as a long range planner, has been working hard to to draft a very professional. Pros and cons type report, SWOT analysis, uh, battery energy storage systems. And that will be part of the review of the advisory committee and that is near complete. We're just in the final edging phases of that right now. Uh, we anticipate the pack to meet. Because it's a condensed schedule, it's sort of monthly every four weeks, which is just like, we we gain one week that way. That'll allow us to have our first meeting on January twenty fifth and as long as we keep the schedule that we're proposing. The final meeting would be on June eighteenth, giving us the last part of that month to finalize reports necessary to submit for the grant and to the state.
What meetings are those?
I'm sorry, I need to uh, need to back up. So we have two processes going on. I appreciate the question, need to remember things are new. We have a grant from the state to do two, two things. One is to update our conference of plan. The others to do a solar ordinance and uh, ordinance for battery energy solar storage systems. There are two separate projects, but under the same grant and they're gonna be run through two separate parallel processes. The solar and best ordinance is, it's not an anti-solar, it's not a pro-solar. It's funded by a pro-solar funding source, but when we applied, I was very careful to indicate that we're not just trying to promote. So what we're trying to do is streamline um, those kind of applications.
Right.
Where they are appropriately located and cited within the community and meet the standards that we're proposing. Ideally, we would like, and I think most of the companies would like to come through the local process. Not lose our power to the state to decide for us. We'd like them to encourage them to. So as long as they're meeting the standards that this group will help to set. Um, then we want to encourage it. Um, there are other areas of county that we want to say no, absolutely not. And we're gonna try to have reasons why, because right now we do have, um, not more, but uh, prohibitions in certain areas, as you know. Uh, but my understanding through EFSEC is EFSEC can walk over those fairly easily because they can say there's not enough background as to why this blanket in area. Shouldn't have solar, but if we have standards in place and measures that say things like if you're within. A certain distance of densities of two house, a house every two acres or something like that, then you have to go to special divisions. Those are things that they actually have to address criteria that they have to let them when they do their review, which it may get more difficult to go through that step process. Hopefully encourage people to go through ours. So ideally, in those locations.
If if we don't decide for ourselves, then India will decide for us.
Yeah, and this isn't to to take away those areas that are prohibited, it's to give reasons. Better reasons why those are prohibited areas so that we can can defend those if it does go to the state level. And then there may be areas in between that maybe one area streamlined, you want to do it here, you want to meet your standards, it's gonna be an easy process. There's areas that we'll fight tooth and nail to not locate these areas. There's some areas that may be questionable and that's a conditional use permit tied case by case. So I see that part of this process, but for the um. Solar battery energy storage ordinance, we're using a um. Project advisory committee. The project advisory committee will have six meetings. They'll formulate a draft recommendation of comprehensive plan policies and a zoning ordinance. There are ordinance for these two items. They'll then go to the planning commission. The planning commission will hold their own public hearings. They'll then make a recommendation to use the board. Ideally by the end of this year.
So setting the criteria of if we do allow solar. What are criteria be? Correct.
Right. Crit- criteria both for where it can be located.
Where as well as what? Fire? Like you were talking, how close to housing? Visual, you should, et cetera, et cetera.
It's very extensive, the work that Evan's already done and we'd be glad if you'd be able to preview of it to look at anytime you'd like to, we'd be glad to send it to you. But it covers all the, all the aspects that you can imagine and you know, this committee will hopefully come up with a few more that we haven't imagined yet. Uh, as far as criteria for both where it's located in general and then once it's, is okay, yes, we think it can be in this area. What specific citing criteria for public safety, health safety, uh, include deconditioning considerations?
Thank you.
Yeah, does that answer questions, Christian?
No, yeah.
Appreciate you having the chance to explain it a little better. Uh, so the first meeting, I had to put an outline there. I won't, won't go through that in detail with you, but it's mostly intended to be an introductory meeting. Um, going over the uh, best report and starting to get initial priorities of the committee. Committee will consist of um, appointed members who hopefully you'll help to give some guidance on today or at your next meeting. Um, and then also we'll have ex officio members, which are county staff. That will be at the table, they're providing information, but wouldn't be voting members as far as the recommendation on going to the planning commission.
So looking at that list, I mean, we'll get into it. We could also have additional ex official members. Cause I looked at some of the lists and some would be, well, maybe this person ought to be on your hit list, ex official.
Okay, that that's.
Sit on the board. Because I was looking at people that live in the community, given the.
I can see, no, I I think you could certainly appoint initial, I didn't mention it being staff only and then others, for example, maybe if you don't appoint someone from. A uh, solar company to be on the committee. We would certainly invite them to participate as public and to give comment if you wanted to elevate that and make it more of an ex officio, non-voting, but. For information, that's certainly.
Or information.
Yeah, that's certainly an option.
Yeah, it's 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 my hope that we vote on that next week to give us, if. If that would be soon enough. Do you feel that would be soon enough if we didn't vote on that today?
We're looking at having our first meeting.
Is at the twenty.
Twenty ninth, um. So it's, that that makes it tighter, but it will be prepared to staff, so it'll just be a matter of making sure.
And everyone on that list, they they kind of know about it and they're aware.
We can, we can, after this meeting, I can send an update to all applicants and let them know that it'll be decided, but then we're also looking at the first, let them have a placeholder, hold the date for this meeting. On the twenty ninth, so I don't think that'd be a problem to wait till two weeks from now.
That'll just give us a chance in a workshop to talk to people and get some input.
That's very reasonable. It's an important issue.
Right.
And support have that balanced group. And when I was looking at the applications, I was looking, well, we can get into that later. I won't get into that now. Compared to plan is a little bit different, so we're not using a project advisory committee for the comprehensive plan work. That was primarily because I see that as the planning commission's document. So they, to me, they're the ones that need to hold the public workshops. So we're gonna be starting out with staff hosting four community workshops. In the beginning of February, um, in Bickleton, Goldell, White Salmon, Trout Lake, we'll be getting advertisements out for these soon, after we have some more details. And then, um, though these will be meetings that are two parts, one will be to educate the community on what is a comprehensive plan, what do we have now? Now, what, what could we do? And then the second part, of course, will be the important part of getting public input as to. What's the evaluation of our current plan? Does it cover what we need? What additional things do we need? What are, what are the priorities of each of these communities? We'll then take that, all that information back and report to the planning commission for their first meeting. And that'll be a large part of their first meeting will be kind of covering the same issues, the education and in public input part. In addition to then providing the feedback that we receive from these outreach meetings.
So the funding. That you had mentioned on the call plan is a two year funding?
It was advertised as a one year with potential of two year funding, so I applied for a two year funding grant. Um, they made it clear in the application, it was contingent on the legislature awarding the second year of funding. So we're still waiting to find out if that happened. There was a ballot measure that would have pulled back the second year, but that failed. So as long as the legislature. Proves it, we'll have the second year of funding, which I sincerely hope to have because. Um, it's no doubt that it's too short of a time to get a draft conference of plan by the end of June. So what we'll do if that's the case is get as far as we can, knowing that we have a lot of work to do after June on our own, on our own, on our own costs.
And that was my point. I think the comp plan is gonna take quite a bit of time, even two years is pretty good haul. A complete overhaul. From something that was done in the seventies.
Do you know, are there of other counties or other areas that are as bind as we are on our comp plan? Is there, have you looked at it and like, oh, most of them are completing it?
Growth management.
Three years or two years or?
Growth management counties would not be because they're required to update their conflict in two years. Well, they take even do minor updates every two years, they're required to report to them five year. Uh, more regular updates. Um, we, we don't have requirement, so I don't know how we can bring other non-growth management countries, that's who we'd have to look at, but I don't know. Not familiar with that.
Well, and Department of Commerce has been very gracious with where we're at. Um, in fact, talking to them, updating the critical area ordinance and. What was the other one that we had to?
Yeah.
And that would bring us into semi-compliance, at least we're staying. Uh, but taking a look with all the communities was a bigger project, so they'd let us. Get to here. But we're making progress.
Thank you, sorry.
No, that is very welcome. I appreciate that. I list other current projects. I don't usually go through all these, just things that you're, uh, that you'd be aware of. I'll mention the shoreline management program, which Sheri, you you brought up. That was something that, how many years ago was that approved to?
Well, our original plan is very, very old.
Yeah.
And it's been almost two years ago and the planning commission did make a recommendation. And there's still the SEPA that's under appeal, so it's been a slow process, but I'm thinking. We're moving forward with critical areas that will need to. Address both of these with the board in the near future.
My understanding is the board at that time held off on reviewing the appeal of the shoreline management program. Uh, because they wanted to get through the critical areas ordinance and. And maybe because they expected to get an appeal on that one as well, wanted to consider them both at the same time because there is overlap and. And things that have to be in line with each other. So once we get to the critical areas ordinance, that's, we'll start looking at how we want to deal with the shoreline management program as well. That likely will come to you this year. I'd expect some one. There's other pending projects, I'll just leave for you. Feel free to ask question now of those or if you, uh, if you want to come talk to me separately. Um, at our next meeting, uh, in two weeks, when I come for an update. I'd like, I'm gonna be presenting some numbers to you, just so you can see historical numbers. I think we've got Debbie in our office has gone back. Uh, night, two thousand nineteen so far, she just keeps working her way back uh, to county permits, so we can give you some permit numbers. Um, to see trends as far as how busy the office is and what what types of permits we're receiving. Also, I'd like to get input at some point, um, and this could be offline as well, though it doesn't, I mean, ultimately it's from all three commissioners. On goals of the department, I'll just share a few real quickly that we discussed in among our team for this year. Uh, we have some ideas to streamline the application process. Right now, we do get a lot of piecemeal applications. Where we're getting application form and the fee, then we'll get something from one, from a surveyor, something from the. Attorney, so we'll get, get them in and it's very difficult to be efficient that way. So we're looking at ways that we can help make sure that we're uh, processing applications in a more streamlined, more efficient manner. Um, and and able to communicate better to the applicants, what they're missing when they are, so that that they can move forward quicker. Uh, likewise, um, working with treasure Greg Gallagher. Uh, to start getting credit card payments. I think that's important for us and and Greg's. I I get in trouble whenever I talk about other departments, even I say positive, he's incredibly community minded, so I really appreciate him and his support for that. We're looking at division of work uh, for two reasons. One, because we want to spread the work around so that one person isn't. Um, the only one who knows how to do each type of application so that we have redundancy. And the other reason is for efficiency, right now, for example, short blast and battery line adjustments are handled primarily by one person. We now Rachel on who's learning to do, do these and I think that when you envision one person having thirty to forty of these applications. It's very difficult to be efficient and be able to communicate when you're dealing with that many applications at one time. So maybe I'll split those up, I think will help quite a bit. Uh, with our workload and with uh, effective communication with the public. We're also gonna be evaluating our website. We think we can use it as a much better tool, um. Than it is being used right now. Lori has done a number of things this last year through a lot of these, uh, the more controversial applications. And with the really assistance of the public, sometimes friendly, sometimes not so friendly, but all the comments are helpful and have helped us be better. About what we're able to provide to the public on our website. Lori's done a great job setting up with that. Um, the public notice, I'd like, we'd like to work on our public notice procedures. Uh, particularly in regard to SEPA, uh, the Environmental Protection Act reviews. There are, according to our current ordinance, and there's reasons for this, we don't provide neighborhood, we are required to provide newspaper notice and required to provide notice to various agencies. Um, and that's important because if we did that for everyone, or short blast or battery line, you know, every, every project that comes in, that would prove be unnecessary delay. And cost to, you know, vast majority. Um, I'd like to work with the board though, to talk about maybe some of those, such as those that go to public hearings, if we would want to consider. Providing notice. I don't know, there's anything that necessarily needs to be. Changed in our codes or processes, although that would be ideal to go ahead and put it to update our code, but as I've reviewed SEPA and discussed it with the. SEPA officials from the state, they provide minimums. We, um, they encourage, you know, there's not really maximum, but how much outreach you can do with these. So I'd like to at least talk about the possibility of providing. Um, some information because often I've seen, well, I've seen in the last, less than a year. Um, neighbors being very frustrated that they had no idea this project was going on until this, the SEPA review was done. And some conditions were set in place that they had no, not even an opportunity to comment on. So it's just something I'd like to discuss with this board to see if, uh, how you, hoping you'd be to changing.
What is the current uh, notice, notification process?
For the SEPA?
Yeah.
That it's a newspaper notice?
And right, it's a newspaper notice, then we also publish or put it on our website. And we have our standard agencies that we contact with SEPA notices, but often SEPA is combined with maybe. A conditional use permit or a rezone or something and then the rezone or CUP ends up having a public hearing. And that's later on, once we're done with SEPA, so there's a. They may not know about SEPA, but then they'll know about the rezone or they'll know about the CUP. And then one other thing we're getting a lot of pushback on is a lot of people, well, newspapers aren't like they used to be. And other ways to notify people in general.
Well, we just have two newspapers published in the county, now we only have one.
Right. And so what, what had happened a couple of years ago with the, in the White Salmon Enterprise combined with Columbia Gorge News. And then that's published out of Hood River, so Clickattack County only has one newspaper of record. And then just newspapers in general, as you will know, people aren't reading newspapers as often.
Isn't there a mile radius for mail notification?
Um, for like a traditional use permit or a rezone, just for example, it's notifying the adjacent landowners within three hundred feet.
On a CUP.
Right, and then we do post public hearing notices on site. As well as again, putting them on our website.
Is there someone younger in the staff that could do like a TikTok video?
All right, let's focus here.
Yeah.
No, that's good. Uh, I think some great goals.
And then, of course, we got our other projects, the number of projects that you know about that we covered, a part of that as well. And we also want to start taking a close look at our zoning code, there's. It's outdated as well. Um, there've been updates over the years that have maybe not, maybe been made that were good. With other sections. And there's a lot of sections that that we need to look at, um, some minor issues, some processes. Um, some minor issues, some process issues, some major, uh, like, um. Initial use criteria, I, items like that, that, that we are, are a little more glaring, I'd also like to even look into the resource lands. Evaluation aspect, because I don't know that's accomplishing what it originally was intended to do, so. There are a number of things we'd like to start looking, I don't see zoning code updates. Especially coming this year because of the amount of other work, but I think we can definitely start putting together our list of the items that we lost in looking at.
Yeah.
That's all that I have, unless you have some questions.
I just wanna say thank you, Scott, because Scott came in this year. And I'm really happy with all the things that you're identifying, and cleaning up and making solid programs. Done a lot of work, and I appreciate it, and it's all been positive, which is great.
Thank you, and the board's been very supportive in getting us the staff we need, we've got a great team.
Mm-hmm, you do.
How many on the staff?
We have, um, um, office manager, we have two assistant planners. And a senior, uh, current ranked planner, a long-range planner and me. That's the six.
You have a lot of heavy lifts going on.
Yeah.
I, it really is, I'm used to talking about the comp plan. That's gonna take some time and effort. It, it's all process and you're starting, well, just how long it's taken on the, pretty critical area. Surely, master plan. It just takes time and then in between time, you know, everything's applicable. That takes time. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, planning commission, solar committee next?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't need agenda in front of me, so I didn't know which one you're.
Yeah, well, uh. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, if you wanna start with the, uh, solar and battery storage systems advisory committee. It sounds like that one maybe wanna be pushed off for two weeks, so, um, you've have the application in front of you, um. As where I was looking at the applications, um, there, there is a policy, I think I referenced in, in our, uh, work. It talks about, yeah, there is on the front page, um, what we're looking for in applicants. Um, I'll read those to you, you saw those when you, you read it. Uh, but trying to find a balanced group that can work collaboratively, that has a range of expertise. And, uh, community interest, if it's an interested expert, if you need people are disinterested in the community. I think that I was looking to broadly cover the county, so when you saw my list of folks that were. The video would include, try to include people from, you know, if there's one person throughout Lake, well, that person's, you know, be the person included. Because we need to have people from all over the county, so, um, I think I just opened up any questions we have?
No, I have your list, and I know we received. Another application, or we received more than one.
But we, we did late last week in another person, who was interested in solar.
Okay, I, yeah, I have that.
Who's there on vacation?
I was.
Yeah, I did, I did think there was, there was one additional.
Yeah, Gavin, Gavin Andrews.
And for, for the grant, we're coming to have, just in that draft, it was nine to fifteen. Um, so we're open to any number, um, the board would, would think's appropriate. If you'd like to, uh, appoint a chair and vice chair, that's appropriate as well, or you can let them.
I allow that committee to put the chair, my, my personal opinion. I, I mean, I think we should point the people and then they can look themselves into their chair.
It was kind of interesting with the different applicants.
Yes.
And there, there's a lot of knowledge out, I didn't analyze.
Actually, with a lot of the list, I mean, I probably agreed to all, but maybe a couple I wanted to talk to the board about. And then there was some down below, uh. Shall we, uh?
And, and your comment, Ron, was, when you were looking at this list, that. It wasn't weighted heavily enough for the people that were the sellers gonna affect them the most?
Well.
I, I saw, I saw what you're, what you were saying, Scott, about like, oh, well, the whole county needs to make this decision. But I definitely think it needs to be weighted more towards the area where they'll be affected by it.
I, I like somebody from Trout Lake involvement, but then I really like somebody for. Two from Pickleton area that's been dealing with it, that has an idea of, this isn't a bunch of marketing. This is better criteria we need on this.
And we definitely, the inquiries we're getting are very, all the inquiries recently have been east of Goldendale. Um, we know that there are lease agreements west of Goldendale, but, uh, that, that is the vast majority of these will be seen in the western, eastern half of it.
Okay, why don't we talk about this later today and see if we need to work on it during the workshop?
Yeah.
Move forward, would you like us to come back later, or do we just?
No, we can discuss that much ourselves.
The next, uh, question is, is planning. Applications, you've received the applications. I don't think I'll offer unsolicited, uh, comments, but if you'd like to have any questions for Laurie or me, we'd be glad to answer.
I'd just like to say, this has been incredible with the amount of response.
Yeah.
We, I've been here since ninety-one, working for the county, and there's been times where. Missioners are searching for volunteers beyond Planning Commission or Board of Adjustment. This is very impressive.
It is, people are paying attention.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, I had four applications for District Three and then one removed.
Hey, and, and nice to see people who we've seen active on some of our meetings or here in other ones.
Yeah. But yeah, I think, uh, we are needing to move forward for the next week to.
Yeah.
Move forward to appoint your recommendation of planning.
Is, is it somewhat standard to have, uh, the current planning commission come in for us and during a workshop and. And talk about, cause especially if there's people that are reapplying to be on there. If someone that's served and, and done a great job to keep them on there, whether to let breast blood in there.
There, there was a policy or.
Right, what we, what we've always seen in the past was if somebody had been consistent, they were participating, doing their job. Uh, helping, doing a great job, if they wanted to reapply, they were just automatically re-accepted and we didn't go out for a new member then. Because I think continuity is very important, like you're working on, uh, the CAO and everything else, if you get a new member. Then you're bringing them all up to speed, it's like changing the board out every four years, makes it tough.
And just to explain what we did, the new policy, relatively new policy, uh, requires that we, that any returning re. Um, members reapply.
Yes.
That we do three, a twenty-one day period of advertising on our website. For, for other applicants, that's the reason we did it, rather than just propose reappointments.
And again, that policy happened within the twenty twenty, that's the old board. It hasn't been.
I, I mean, I'm okay with them handing in their applications. If you wanna talk to people within your district and come forward with your recommendation for your district. Or your district, uh, I'm great with that.
Yeah.
Put that on the agenda.
Does that give you time, Scott, if it's on the agenda for next week?
Or the planning.
We have hearings on the twenty-first.
You know, and, and I realize as we've gone on, I said that next, in two weeks is fine, I think it still is, we can work around it for the, the pack, but, um. I think that they do have to be appointed by resolution, is that, is that?
On time, commissioner.
So we'd have to have a resolution along with.
Next.
We do, next week potentially, and for the pack as well.
Okay.
If there's any way to get the list.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later.
For planning.
Yeah.
I, I got an idea how we get there.
Yeah, with the, the pack, we might be able to get around it by doing a more of an open workshop, inviting all the. Members to come participate, without actually being an official meeting, since if there's a, there's not, not a resolution by that point. But yeah, the, the planning commission definitely need a resolution.
Okay, and so it's more crucial we get through it because of meeting time. Where they can hold their hearings and their meetings and not get behind.
Especially with the floodplain ordinance, I'm just a little paranoid. We don't, planning commission doesn't get through it till you got to the commissioners then.
Maybe more of a question on the planning commission. I assume the member that's in the seat. Still has that authority until the.
No, their terms have expired.
Once terms expire.
So we have three missing members out of nine right now, we have three. So.
And so when we do vote on it, what, I'm, I'm not clear on what, what has to happen. So, where, where we might not have enough time?
You, we have to actually, you have to appoint them by resolution. So there'll need to be a resolution for either all three or for each of them to appoint them, so often, like, if, if you made your determination today, then we can get a resolution ready for. Next week, um, with a shorter timeframe, if it's not decided today, then we need to somehow prepare for a resolution with. To be able to be signed that day.
Alright. So then, do we need to do it on Thursday?
I don't know if Lisa has any.
Yeah, let, let's, let's talk about this later today, I'm kinda running behind on the time.
And I think we have resolutions from the pack, that can quickly be.
So we could do it in the morning next week and then put the.
I would like to communicate with everybody who's applying.
Right.
Before I stand here publicly states of them, and I haven't done that. Of who applied.
And Ron, this would give us time to work on it, and I confirm with the girls that if we made our decisions in the morning next week. We can have the resolution ready for the afternoon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright.
Take us a while to get our.
I am falling behind on the schedule, it's. Departmental update. Department of Corrections, Phil.
Try to make up some time in the break. Hopefully I don't disappoint Andrew, though.
Alright. Good morning. So, uh, since we met last, uh, the trail transition is going as expected. We do have some small hiccups in equipment, as I mentioned before.
Yeah.
Uh, probably the biggest example would be patches. We reached out to vendors and essentially threatened us to have to go somewhere else, we've had a long relationship with them and it should be quick and easy, so. We have people working on that today, and hopefully we can get that done and get our patches. And, um, uniforms over, over, um, sort of word, so the staff can either wear a uniform or, um, at least wear the appropriate. Some statistics from last year, I said that word right, that's an intimidating word for me. Uh, we had five hundred and four bookings in twenty twenty-four in the jail. Of those, uh, there was three hundred ninety-six different individuals, so some people were booked more than once. And we had an average daily population of thirty-four. And that's, uh, those statistics are according to our spillment program that the jail uses for all work bookings. Um. This last week, I went to the Island County Jail to observe some of their processes for, uh, medical intake and screening and questioning here, so that we can. Have, um, practice, the best practice, Island County's, um, well-respected, uh, in the jail community for having, and, and they're like jail, they're small, like us. Um, smaller community, um, and so, looked at their screening process, uh, intake questions and stuff. So that we can ensure that the individuals that come into our care are screened properly, so we can get them the, the care that they need while they're with us. Um, we're additionally working on finalizing policies and, uh, standard operating procedures. Um, these are all intended to economize the work that we do, because we have, uh, our jail staffing, whose numbers are low. The staff that actually work in there, so economizing the work that we do and ensuring that those are industry standard best practices and RCW compliant. Um, is challenging, um, but we're chipping away at it. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the multi-passenger van, uh, we called her Nellie, is still down. Uh, I intend to meet with you individually and discuss some options. I'm still waiting on a couple of quotes, I think that we were stalled a little bit with the holiday season and people being out. Uh, so I'd come at you with some accurate numbers and options. Um, I also thanked last time our staff that we do, they're still doing a wonderful job, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the volunteers that come into our jail, there are several community volunteers. That come in, um, and I'd be looking towards expanding those programs and having more programming opportunities as we move forward. Um, in that jail, so more to come on that.
Question?
Yeah.
So you mentioned staffing. Uh, where, what are our numbers, where are we at just staffing?
So currently, we run, we run, um, uh, four groups, they were twelve-hour days, we have one sergeant, four corporals. Uh, full-board operator and some correctional officers in there. Um, so generally that, that leaves two people on the floor, um, and, um. And I have concerns about that. Um, I think that it's, my concerns, this isn't the appropriate venue for them.
Yeah.
To discuss, but I do want to discuss them with you individually.
Well, and, and maybe I should have backed, uh, maybe it's how many open positions do we have in the department?
Two.
I should have clarified mine versus. What you think optimal staffing is versus, how many positions at this time do we have?
We're recruiting, we'll, we'll be recruiting for two.
My apologies. Thank you very much, any, any question?
No.
No.
Alright, thank you. I'd like to move the commissioners' miscellaneous reports to after public works. We'll call the nurses here. We need to keep staff in and out.
I appreciate that, we'll be quick.
Yep.
Okay, uh, nothing on the consent agenda, it's rare for us that we don't have anything on, but it's a new year, we'll get, get caught up here very shortly. Um, and we don't have any pavements, we took care of those last time. So, uh, with that, we'll dive right into the construction program.
Alright, so we've got two overlay projects that are up and coming, so currently we're working with, uh, the contractors to get a final contract, performance bonds. And get the plant right, get work in order, should we get started on those? On road design, end of things, bridge repair bundles, the consultants completed the designs and plans for two of those bundles. And just waiting on some environmental processes to complete. And the last bundle, the bearing repair bundle is still in early stages of designs, a lot of environmental pieces to that, um, that affects the design of that project. White plastic edge lines project is on add, we'll have a bid opening on the twenty-first. Curve warning signs, we've got the final set of plans and reviews, so we're looking forward to, uh, the washlet approval to get out to add on that project. Uh, road safety plan and update, the consultant that was chosen for that, we're going back and forth on getting their agreement finalized, so we can get them started on that work as well.
Okay, on the maintenance side. Uh, in Pickleton, we're grading pothole patching with cold mix and, uh, doing winter work. Basically, at this time, it means sanding some in the, when it gets, uh, icy. West side, we're, uh, cleaning culverts, hand brushing, uh, of course, winter work, replacing guardrail ends. On Courtney and doing some guardrail work on snow, we do that ourselves now, we got certified, so we can do that, it's a heck of a cost savings. These are actually reimbursable because they were accidents and we have. Worked with the sheriff's department, we know who did them, so there way we can bill their insurance.
Well, did we find out who took our guardrail out on the Glenwood, uh, right?
Oh, no. That one we don't have a report on.
No, we don't have.
Just roll by it the other day.
Yes, we, that one we don't have, so, if we do, we always bill them out, um. And I wanted to let everybody know, you know, we had a lot of snow, we had some snow, you know, some stuff on the west side may have got missed a little bit. We have four new people, this was their first time plowing, not maybe their first time plowing, but their first time plowing for us. So it takes them a little while to get familiarized with their routes. Um, so, but we, but we got everything, everything is cleaned up.
You, you say four new people?
Four new people on the west side, yes, and we still have a slot open. We also will be, uh, coming to you here in the next week or so, uh, because we also have, uh, person retiring. Uh, as of the end of February. On the west side, so. Uh, upcoming facilities are in work events, Superior Court is nine, was nine-five percent complete by the end of the year. Uh, on the event side, uh, emergency management's gonna be using the exhibit building this Saturday. And, uh, the baby shower went well in Dalzport Community Center, so we open it up for all kinds of things, um. Fuel Island, we did, finished our plan review, this is for the Fuel Island that we are going to construct on the other side of the fairgrounds. To replace the Fuel Island we have in Goldendale. Uh, the Goldendale tanks, they don't leak, I don't wanna get anybody worked up about that, they're double tanks. And one of the sides is compromised, but it's not letting any fuel out, it's not the internal tank. So you get noise. So you get moist, you're inside, it sets the alarm on. And we're required to replace it. The island needs to be replaced anyway. We've always wanted to get the fuel island out away from. So people don't come through our, come through the shop with all the equipment when they need to fuel up. Uh, we own property over, if anybody wants to know, it's, uh, if you know where Ty Ross Parks is playing out on, um, out there, it's out by the fairgrounds, just north, northwest corner. It's not the fairgrounds proper, but it's the northwest corner of where the fairgrounds or northeast, sorry, northeast of the fairgrounds there, right off of, uh, Fairgrounds Road.
Oh, to the east.
Yes. Okay, um, jail vents upgrade, all the jail vents have been upgraded except for one in a common area. It just happened to get missed. It's on order, so that'll get done. Uh, we've talked to Bill, Bill's aware of it. Again, it's in a common area, so it is under camera supervision. Um, health department wall is done. The graphics need to be reinstalled. The, the graphic design artist had, uh, two choices on everything, what side of the wall to put it on. And to put it up or lower, we told them they picked the wrong side, so now they gotta come back and redo it. That's on their dime, not on ours. And then that project will be done, um, which means all the projects in twenty twenty-four on the facility side were complete. Um, Dallas Port Community Center, we're starting on the new one. We will be reaching out to them. Uh, we're going to be replacing the ceiling in there before it falls in on somebody. It's kind of a messy thing because it's blown in insulation. But our guys will go in, we'll remove it all, package it all, reuse. Okay, on the other issues.
Was, was there, is, there seemed to be leaking in there. Was that leaking from the roof or is that?
That is actually a unit.
I, I agree with Russ.
Yes. Yeah, the air, it's the air conditioning unit, um, that's getting long in the tooth. It's the condensation tray.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll also fix that. I mean, the unit's not great because the condensation tray is put in backwards, so it drain, when it fills up, it actually drains into the roof instead of draining to the drain out. Uh, we didn't have any trouble when we didn't have the, when the unit was functioning good, but now that the unit's starting to get long in the tooth, it freezes up a little more. So then when it condensates, it leaks into the, but that'll be taken care of. Um, I just wanted to clear, because we, I got some calls this, this during the holidays about us plowing, um, fire districts. We do plow fire districts if they have an interlokal and if they pay us. Some of them have chose not to. Years ago, we used to do it on a pass through. Uh, but we got called on that. We ended up in the paper, so we don't do that anymore. We'll do it, again, we can do it because they're another, they're a government entity.
Yeah.
As long as they pay us to do it.
What was the report in the paper? What was the?
Well, we had done something for, um, the Grange. And somebody got after us about, you're taking away work from the private sector. Uh, so yeah, it's up, it's up to the fire districts.
So I have concerns about that because Grange's versus fire districts, you have ambulances that need to get out. I think we have a different scenario.
That's why we work with them. We can't do Grange's.
No.
They're not a fire, they're not a, a taxi district. We can do fire districts and we told them, again, we, we reached out to all the fire districts before the winter and said, if you still want us, if you want us to plow, most of them we have, um, we have, uh, interlokal's with, almost all of them we do. Uh, it's really important us having our locals with them, the schools and everybody else in case they need something in emergency to five-year agreements we do every five years.
So you have interlokal's with the schools. Do they pay us while?
Yes. Um, we used to do Centerville School. They found somebody else that is more responsive again. You know, the fire departments are a lot quicker, the schools.
Yeah.
It doesn't help us to plow the school out if the roads are harmful, so.
Oh yeah, if we can't, get the school buses to the school, doesn't mean anything to plow the school.
I still have concerns about fire district budgets.
I think this should, I'd like to have more discussion.
We can have more discussion.
The smaller fire districts that are limited financially.
Yeah, just, just to try to put a little bit, uh, I'll give you one for instance, uh, Glenwood Fire District. Um, I can't remember if it's eight or the numbers, but we, we, we do a pass through there. It's like a ten-minute thing.
Yeah.
So through the whole winter, we might bill them an hour.
As well as if we're doing something like that, we would not be taking liability if we cracked their asphalt or their apron.
Right.
Yeah, because that's where I can see where it gets sticky quick if we try to do a favor, but then we have to go back and repair.
Yeah, it, for us, if it's an emergency situation, we'll just do it. I mean, but the auditors come after us for that. The state auditors, because that's gifting road funds to.
I, I think the interlokal's correct, just how we charge.
Yeah.
Yeah, be good to know more.
Yeah, we could throw you, we could, we could go into that more depth if you want. We could bring more stuff for you next time.
Probably each fire district's different too.
Yeah.
It is, it depends, it's.
So if it's in, what, what would that hour cost?
I won't hold you to it. Uh, yeah, I better probably not say till I know for sure. It's gonna be typically, it's just a standard practice, so it's one person and a dump truck. It's usually, sometimes though you get by with, we can do it with a one ton.
One ton.
And then it's much cheaper. We usually do whatever we have in the area.
Yeah, who's plowing the road in front?
Yes, and a lot of times, you know, like Clickatap's gonna be a one-time. Uh, you know, Glenwood's probably going to be a ten yard or five, like a, a hundred to two hundred dollars or? Yeah, you're, yes, that's somewhere in the ballpark, yes. And again, we're, we try to be very, um, very reasonable with them. We don't want to. So I will keep us moving forward, but I can bring more information next time.
That would be good.
Pictures, we like to have, you know. Okay, we had a rock slide during Christmas over at Old Highway Eight. Um, the, the rock slides on the backside and the, the, the map is on, so everybody knows where we're talking about. Um, essentially, we're gonna go out and look at it again. I looked at it yesterday. Seth and I are gonna go look at it again today. We're just bringing you up to speed on what this is. We're hoping we can get by without doing rock scaling and all that other stuff. Because that gets very expensive, very fatness. Uh, but we did have some rockets weathered with salt. And, uh, there's actually, so quite a bit did come down. We'll have to drill and pop some of the bigger ones.
When did it come down?
Uh, I will tell you. Should I have that handy? But I do have that, so.
But it's still locked.
No, no, no. We got on it right away. It's in the ditch. We hauled off what we could. And no, we, uh, we get it open, uh, this twenty to the twenty-seventh. We had the, we had the road open that morning. We tried to respond pretty quick. Um, and, uh, so actually have a bit of good news. Uh, we do work for the cities. We actually, they, I, I give them the estimates that are needed for their TIB grants and help them get their TIB grants. They've been successful. Benjen and White Salmon got job projects which we will do for them. So in Benjen, we're doing Humboldt Street, we're repaving their, their street. Um, Franklin, we're grinding, our Humboldt, we're grinding and repaving, and Franklin Street, we're, uh, repairing and repaving. Uh, and then White Salmon, we're doing dock grade. So, which means we are going to, uh, crack seal it, patch it, chip seal it, and then fog seal. So for us, that's approximate total of about four hundred fifty thousand dollars. And for them, it works well because they don't have to go to bid and go through all that stuff. We can just go in and we're, we can do that. We do that in cities. It's our, we try to work with our partners. Um, the Wish Ramp thing, I, there's a Wish Ramp meeting with the community council, I believe, next Thursday.
Day.
Monday, Monday, I'll be there.
Yeah, five-thirty.
Yes, five-thirty. I will be there. And I think that's all we have unless I get something else. Or questions from the board.
No, just thank you for attending Wish Ramp.
Yep.
Will anyone be at Dallas Port?
Actually, I was gonna talk, I'm gonna call, I have, uh, I got a call from the, uh, developer, so I'm gonna return the call. I can't make it of a doctor's appointment. So I won't be there. We'll see how, you know, maybe Seth can go or we'll get somebody.
It's kind of preliminary.
It's very preliminary. Uh, they want to know about the sewer and the water. Um, I had met with the Dallas Port Water District and we, they, developer's supposed to be there, but uh, but we're still, you know, we're still working hand in hand with the Water District. We're preparing for it. I mean, we, the sewer for us is not an issue.
No, I assume there's plenty of capacity.
Yes. Yes, so for the board, the new board members, uh, we're at about forty-five percent capacity, so we still have a lot of capacity.
And I don't know where I ran into it in the past six months or so. There is a pipe connection to there too. Uh, it already runs over to the backside, the south side of the R B.
Yes, I believe that you are correct, yes.
Forty-five percent capacity, it's, it's currently serving how many? You know what it's, how many it's currently serving residents or however that's.
Yeah, how many ERUs?
I'm not really sure. I just, I just know what's said about it. I could get the ERUs for you. Uh, but it is at forty-five percent, which means we still have, you know, the fifty-five percent capacity. We're, we're not even halfway. So it's, it's a very nice system. Very expensive.
Assume our SDCs have been looked at too long ago.
We do it every year now.
Okay.
Um, and it's been a change from when the system, they used to do a standard, um, like, three percent or two percent markup every year. They don't, we don't do that.
Okay.
We do, uh, we'll look at it. We work with PUD to see what the cost is. And then Public Works will bring something before the board. And then the board makes the determination on what they want the rates to go in, which realistically, that's the way it is supposed to be done.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure we're talking about the housing they're talking about, system development charges.
Right.
Big difference on
Yes.
Absorbing the impacts of what it creates.
Yeah, and when it's big like that, we will talk, that's a different ballgame altogether, this, for a bigger development. For assistant development charges of what we charge you for each one, or what we charge for monthly service, that's brought every year to the board to, to evaluate that cost.
Close and different.
Is, yeah.
Way to look at it.
Yes. Um, we bill it by ERUs. So, uh, very similar to how you, you know, how most systems are set up. We've gone to that, where the board, in this instance, it's fist board, would decide what we wanna, if we want to increase the SDCs, we want to increase the monthly rates. Last year, I think we went up by commissioners older. Was it five percent or ten percent?
Knowing that we would have to do it over time.
Yes, we have to do it over time. And I think the SDCs went up the standard two percent.
Oh, boy.
Is what I, is what I want to remember, but I'm not sure. I can, we, we.
As long as we've been viewing it and has been increasing.
Yes. Yes, and you will review it again. I think it's May or June.
And, and it hadn't been done for quite a while, and that's why we stretched it out too. We didn't just do, do one big hit. We decided to get it back here.
Yeah, so.
And it's pretty reasonable, right? It's pretty, pretty low compared to the area or?
It's.
It was getting up there.
It's, it was brought into the area.
It's, it's up there. Pretty reasonable with, I mean, I say reasonable with others in the county, you know, it's not behind like it was at one time.
That is correct.
In any wastewater anymore is cheap. Or water.
I, I don't remember the actual cost.
I thought it was around sixty, something.
I'm looking at the guys from Dallas.
I thought it was mid-sixties.
I think you're, I'm pretty sure. I think, I'm pretty sure you're right. That's, that makes sense, it's in the sixties. Which I think is where most people are sitting. I don't know what it is to Goldendale, but I think everybody that are White Salmon.
The PUD said, uh, she, she, PUD said, uh, she might have heard that, I'm never like in the.
Exactly, that's exactly it. With all the other systems there.
Yeah, Glenwood's up there. Well, you know.
Okay, sure. No. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead and move to economic development. Yes, I know, uh, eleven plus, I need to take a break before eleven, so.
You need to take a break before eleven?
I'll just give you a hint. You have twenty minutes?
Okay, hey, hey, dude, if we get back even. Well, we're gonna do as much as we.
This doesn't look like a twenty-minute guy, I don't think.
So the, uh, so the way we were gonna do this was, uh, today we were originally just gonna do a, a brief economic development update. Some things coming down legislatively with the Department of Commerce. Uh, the big focus today that I was gonna plan on doing was, um, just kind of lead into the kind of brief to y'all with Keaton, our natural resources person for this, for, for our monthly update, just so you guys are all familiar with the projects that we have that are out there. Um, and then following on, we have our KC PTA meeting coming up January, I want to say twenty-eighth.
Yes.
And so during that, during that meeting, we would be doing, I'm planning on doing that, our, our ten-year economic development strategic updates. And so that would be our kind of brief to catch all the county commissioners up on, on the things that are happening in both economic development and natural resources, so.
What time is usually KC PTA held at?
Six P M.
Six P.
Six P M.
And do you want to have Keaton come back at one o'clock to finish spending?
We can if.
Okay. So without further ado.
Uh, I'm Chelsea Jones. Um, I'll start off with our lodging tax. Uh, we had our last lodging tax advisory committee meeting December eighteenth. Um, the committee viewed applicants' project presentations, discussed the budget, and made award suggestions for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The budget was set at a hundred and thirty-five thousand, um, which was about the same for the applicants as it was the previous year. And the su- uh, suggested allocated awards total, uh, was a hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred ninety-five. The resolution and contracts, uh, will be in front of you guys next week for signature and review. Affordable housing, uh, the resolution to appoint new members to the advisory board was signed on December twenty-fourth. Unfortunately, uh, wrong dates were on that resolution, so the corrected uh, resolution and amendment will go in front of the board next week, as well as the appointment letters for the new committee members. And the first meeting will be in early twenty twenty-five for that advisory board. Um, Casey Peta, a resolution for board appointments and appointment letters will be in front of you as well next week. All members will be returning with the exception of one, um, who represents the county at large and the Trout Lake area. So if you guys would like to complete any suggestions to reach out to. And Washington State Department of Commerce video grant writer grant. Uh, the memorandum of understanding between Clickatap County, Mount Adams Institute, the county of McHead, um, from the consent agenda this morning, once those are signed, they're fully executed and both those entities will be able to begin their grant writing work. Uh, the Mount Adams Institute is using that fund, um, to hire grant writer to complete their AmeriCorps grant, which um, accounts for one-third of their total operating funding. Um, McHead will be using funds, uh, to assist entities on the county's infrastructure project list to look for and write grants. Uh, city engagement, um, we've met with the city of Goldendale and the tenants of the incubator space to discuss upgrades to the ventilation system, driveway and a few other improvements. We're gonna move forward and include those. driveway and a few other improvements, we're gonna move forward and include those on the infrastructure project list to try and get them some funding for improvements. And then we have completed the county's infrastructure project list, which we work with the, um, all three cities, and fire districts, and port districts. Um, and that will go with the economic development strategic plan for the year. Any questions?
He signs up, I was boring. Yeah, he signs all that.
So the grant, the grant writer, that's, that's only, that grant writer will only be used to get grants for AmeriCorps?
Uh, so for the Mount Adams Institute, they're hiring, yep, they're hiring one grant writer for that specific grant. Um, they don't have the capacity to write it in-house, and so they're hiring out, um, the McHead dollars, those will be going towards county infrastructure projects.
Okay.
And that grant comes from the Department of Commerce. Any other questions?
Or, or later.
Yeah.
Well, as, uh, to help in the, for the sake of time, I'll just go right into my director portion pretty quick. Um, so the Columbia Board Regional Airport, we're going out for bid January fifteenth. So we got the letter from the E D A, so we're excited for that. Um, yeah, again, K C Pita, six P M, January twenty-eighth. Um, so I'm not, I've got some ideas in regards to the Clickcat Mill site. And, and I think with the Clickcat Mill site specifically, the county does have uh, uh, a contract with Ecology for the Integrated Planning Grant, two hundred thousand dollars. Um, I would recommend to the board, if you're doing a workshop this month on the Thursday, and, and we would like to maybe invite Mary from Ecology, um, as well as perhaps David Quinell from the P A's office to come in and, and listen to, to, to not just the background information on the Clickcat Mill site, but kind of where Ecology's point of view, is it or, or is with, with the site? And, and that will, you know, cause right now we have a, we went out for bid for a contractor, but right now we haven't done anything, and so I know the P A's got some some concerns with that, but I, I think it's important that everyone's kind of on the same page with however, however we move forward. I'd like to bring that up for, as a suggestion.
I would like that, uh, I know we have differences of opinion of where we go forward for that. Uh, we need to land on a policy from this board of what we wanna do for that.
It'd be good to understand, oh, history, what's behind it before we need to make a decision. Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Okay. And I've already got the, the slides and the PowerPoint, I did this out there a bit, a couple of years ago, so we're all ready to go, just whenever, whatever Thursday y'all wanna hit in January.
Of course, there's some people in the community that are starting to work on some projects that's already.
They might even get their train back, they've worked on a lot of things.
That's right.
And my, uh, biggest thing that I think is a plus out of this is Mary from Ecology, they're being so helpful. You know, we aren't getting any roadblocks, we're getting help, they wanna see this project done, and they're finding us ways through. And that's, I'm a different.
Yeah.
Work, workaround with Ecology for us, they're making it easy.
That's a cool spot, it'd be a, what's a nice or can be something really, really amazing.
They have some good ideas.
So legislatively with the budget, I know we have the new Governor Bob Ferguson that's coming in, Governor Inslee submitted his uh, preliminary budget for the, for the next biennium, and although it's gonna change, the, you know, as far as the governor's office and Commerce is concerned, there's gonna be some trend lines that are gonna be similar, no matter who's gonna be in office, and, and in essence, there's gonna be some, some budget cutbacks, uh, to begin with, the Associated Development Organization, this year we're funded at five million, and they're gonna decrease that to four point three million across the state. I don't see that really impacting us, I think we're probably just gonna go to normal levels of funding that we did previously, we had a ten thousand dollar bump in our funding this last year. Um, and then there was a very significant reduction, uh, that was made for the micro enterprise development organizations, uh, a four million dollar reduction or two million dollars per year. Um, there was a significant reduction, it was made to statewide tourism, um, and that was down six, uh, down to six million dollars. The regulatory roadmap was just completely eliminated, that was, the regulatory roadmap is what we use with business startups to help them get through the regulatory hurdles, um, that was basically just cut, um. There, there is a reduction to the clean energy site readiness program of the Department of Commerce, and there's an elimination of the industrial symbiosis program of two point eleven million. Um, and then they eliminated the circular economy market development program, about three hundred ninety K. Uh, there's.
These figures are what it's been reduced down to, or how much it's been reduced?
How much is being reduced?
Okay.
So, um, and then, so like the reduction or the, the elimination of, of the industrial symbiosis program, that two point eleven million is, is a complete, like, that's how much the, the state's saving by eliminating that program. Um, and then there's a reduction to the implementation of the employee ownership program that they've got. Um, and then there are significant reductions to the small business resilience networks program, that was cut fifty percent, uh, or two point seven six four million. Um, the innovation cluster accelerator program was moved to the, to the capital budget. Uh, for us, the I C A P program, that, the Gorge Technology Alliance runs that with Jason Hartman. Uh, I'm not sure what that's gonna look like, and that is basically just focused on our U A V advanced aerospace manufacturing folks that we have within the, uh, you know, within the county. Um, and then there's just overall reductions to Commerce, uh, O B D C or Office of Economic Development and Competitiveness, uh, basically back down to maintenance level of funding. So this is gonna change in the next six months, depending on how this session goes, uh, for the next biennium, but I bring all this up to say, these are the things that are being offered up, if that makes sense, so. It was just per one, so, and then, now we have, we have resources.
Uh, we can also speak to, you know, legislative updates, um, in terms of the budget for, you know, the college and programs as well. Iron freezes wholesale cuts everywhere, um, you know, there was a significant water modeling program that was gonna be developed, and they basically put a hole on it. It was the hiring freeze.
From the leak?
It's, so, um, participate, similar cuts everywhere. Um, just wanted to real quick introduce myself to the new board, um, uh, you already know me, Commissioners older, but Commissioner Ira, Commissioner Andrews, um, my name's Keaton Curtis, I've been with the county for a little over a year after coming up here from South Texas, and although y'all normally get a natural resources update from me, I also work in economic development as well, so, um, familiar with both sides, so, um, I, I have it hooked up, it's not on the screen.
I have to screenshot.
I have to screenshot, okay. I'm not in Zoom, I need to get back in Zoom?
Yes.
It's divided into two parts, it's a basically a brief history, and then it's projects. We do not have time to do all the projects, so if y'all wanna have me back, I'll can have you back, if not, I will just do the brief history. So let me get into the.
Each year, pressure is great.
I sure saw that.
Always like this. So the lead-in the ground kind of hasn't started, it's just barely getting underway, we're still waiting to hear back from the Recreation and Conservation Office about basically, you know, the W's, right, you know, funding, what the dates are gonna be. But, you know, we have a lot of open projects, and now that we have new commissioners on board, I sort of wanted to give the, the really brief history about this program. Right, so, I mean, there have always been concerns about, you know, uh, fish habitat, you know, tribal environmental concerns, um, but one of the sort of seminal pieces of legislation was the Water Resources Act of nineteen seventy-one, which, um, wasn't the first, right, but it was the biggest in sort of, uh, segmenting, localizing water resources for development, for conservation, and for agriculture. And then was codified further in, um, W A C, uh, one seventy-three, five hundred, the Water Resources Management Program, which split up the state's water resources into sixty-two R I A's, water resource inventory areas, three of which are not within necessarily the borders of Clickcat County, but are all around, um, R I A twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, as you can see on the bottom. R I A thirty is the watersheds for the Wind River and the White Salmon River. R I A thirty is the watershed for the Clickcat River, R I A thirty-one is a bunch of different watersheds from around Rock Creek all the way to the city of Kennewek, with the Horse Heaven Hills on top. So it is just a little bit better of a.
So we oversee thirty-one then?
We oversee, yeah, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one.
All the way to?
All the way to Kennewek.
Kennewek.
There, so it's a big geographical area, but that one specifically, it just ain't got a whole lot of water in it. So, I mean, water for, for ag, for ag purposes, but the fish, fish bearing streams. So, uh, further, uh, this is sort of similar to a presentation I gave the, the previous board a couple of months ago about the Dry Buller Creek project, um, but, um, there was watershed planning legislation in nineteen ninety-seven, which created funding opportunities to do water resource, um, planning and projects right within the framework of the R I A's, and then additionally, it divided R I A twenty-nine, split the Wind River watershed from the White Salmon River watershed, so it's R I A twenty-nine B, thirty and thirty-one, that are within or sort of lead into the lead agency area, right? So, uh, at the time, back in the late nineties, all the organization, the local governments and organizations got together, and they declared a lead agency for watershed projects, and that was us, so we were to Clickcat County, Clickcat County Natural Resources Department was selected as that lead agency by Scaminia County, Yakima County, Benton County, um, I don't know about the, about the tribe, but, um, those were decisions that were made back then in the late nineties, and that provided, it's not the same as lead entity, but it provided a convenient and existing framework for how you would make that declaration, when in nineteen ninety-eight, the legislation came out where, um, uh, put a focus on salmon recovery, the state had to make habitat project lists and prioritize salmon recovery, and then local governments and, uh, lead entities, right, on the R I A framework would establish a habitat project list and have committees and basically organize and plan out those, uh, those water resource areas, right? So there are, within the framework, there are regional entities, and then there are smaller lead entities within the, the sort of umbrella of the larger regional entities. So we have the Mid Columbia Regional Entity right above us, um, Yakima Basin, and then we have Lower Columbia, you know, right, you know, uh, to the west of us. We exist as a unique entity, especially for our geographic size and in region that we cover, within these two regional entities, and that's how we sort of receive our funding as well, um. So this is how we're set up, we're staffed by the Natural Resources Department, we have, um, a Natural Resources Project Coordinator, which would meet. We have two committees for, um, for projects, we have a technical advisory committee of industry experts, habitat biologists, fish biologists, hydrologists, et cetera, and we have a citizens review committee of, it also has biologist on it, but recreationalists, concerned citizens. Each committee meets, uh, at least three times a year, we deliberate on projects, we fund projects, we have a lead entity strategy that, that prioritizes what projects are gonna occur in the lead into the area, and also, it's another convenient framework for all of these sort of members of these sponsors and regulation, recreationalists to meet and, and sort of talk about, you know, um, you know, planning and what should occur in this and that within the lead of the area. Are we funded? Um, so all our funding comes directly or indirectly from the Recreation and Conservation Office, so they directly give us funding for the lead entity coordinator, but the actual funding that we get for projects comes as a percentage of the Mid Columbia and the Lower Columbia. So the Lower Columbia gives us two point seven percent of their, of their standard surfboard funding, and you can only use that on projects that prioritize Lower Columbia stocks, which basically means it's only gonna be used on R I A twenty-nine B and the, and the sort of White Salmon River watershed. Mid Columbia gives us thirty percent of their funds, we can use that anywhere. They'll sound like small percentages, but they add up to a lot of money every year. Um, I, I say standard surfboard funding because every year we get sort of different programs and, and projects, right, that not are only just through the, the salmon recovery funding board, surfboard, but also through R C O in general that the lead entity can utilize. So just recently, we got, um, what's called riparian funding, it was funded through the Climate Commitment Act, which was, you know, like emissions trading, right, and that money was allocated to conservation projects and whatnot. Um, on the next slide, uh, that riparian funding was almost a million dollars, and then additionally, the funding we got, standard funding was also about a million dollars, right? So we had, you know, just about a two million dollar, um, funding round for, um, for, for last, uh, for last grant cycle. That's historically fairly large, especially with the addition of the riparian funds, I've been told it could be even larger this year, uh, in terms of the money we can get, normally, the standard surfboard funds is, you know, six to seven hundred thousand dollars, and normally, we do about three projects a year. Um, not just because of the funding, but that's just what the sort of sponsors can handle, and then since ninety-nine, we funded seventy-four projects. Uh, we have it on there, that's only including the data the department has available, the records are kind of spotty in the early two thousands, right? Um, but given our size, given our funding, um, i- it's, it's quite a bit, quite a bit more than, than one would think, where, where we have available and are capable of. Uh, these are our most common, uh, sponsors, Mid Columbia Fisheries, Yakima Nation, the Conservation Districts, Columbia Land Trusts, and there used to be a lot more in the past, W D F W, the county itself, um, private landowners directly, right, the, the, these are, um, you know, people who we'd like to bring back in the fold possibly, you know, um, you know, competition among sponsors for different areas is probably all, always good in order so that different areas are not, you know, hyper-prioritized, but, uh, uh, these are things that we'd like to, um, to grow in the future. I think after that, we're gonna get to the projects, and we're out of time. We have time?
Probably got a little longer.
A little bit longer?
Got a few moments.
Alright, so I'll try to run through this, um, so we have our three R I A's, right, this is R I A twenty-nine D, White Salmon River from Mount Adams down to the Columbia River, we have, what is that, yeah, we have five projects, one of them already being done, we have two projects on Rattlesnake Creek, and we have three on the White Salmon River, not specifically the White Salmon River, basically from, uh, former Northwestern Lake all the way down to the Columbia. So, we have two projects in upper Rattlesnake Creek, um, both by Columbia Land Trust. Um, this one was funded in twenty twenty-one for, um, it was originally funded at, I didn't hit a nineteen thousand, I think it was something like a hundred and twenty thousand, and then it was refunded, um. When a cost amendment is submitted through the surfboard, those are funds from the surfboard, it doesn't compete with the, the projects from the grant round. Now, you can do that, and that did happen in the last grant round, so if they start off at two hundred thousand dollars and they increase to eight hundred or a million, that's not funds that sort of comes out of out, or allocation, those are funds that the surfboard basically gives to the, gives to the sponsor. So this was funded in twenty twenty-one, this was an acquisition project of two miles of upper Rattlesnake, uh, disparate parcels, right, where the goal is to sort of connect them with existing federal public lands. It is Columbia. It is Columbia Land Trust, so they, um, are always prioritizing public access, right, which is a big concern whenever it comes to these acquisition projects. Um, so that, that is something to take into consideration whenever you see Columbia Land Trust acquiring a parcel, right, they do prioritize public access when possible. So connecting existing federal land on Upper Rattlesnake Creek, um, you know, almost a thousand, almost a thousand acres, right? Hopefully springboard into further restoration activities, which more than likely will, because talks with the sponsors have led me to believe that they wanna do some more work on Rattlesnake Creek and within the, uh, upcoming grant round. So this is just a brief timeline, this is also a presentation I will be doubling up for my committees, so some of these timelines maybe aren't the most interesting to read for y'all, right? But basically, um, it's, you know, um, it had to increase its cost because they increased the acquisition of the acres that were gonna be, you know, that were gonna be included into the project. So it's, um, only been three years, which in this world is not that bad, right, in terms of time?
Yeah.
Um, and here are just some pictures of, if they wanna load, just some pictures of the reach, right, so, you know, pretty area of Rattlesnake Creek.
Mm-hmm.
Here's another one. Whoever wants to load, there we go, so pretty area. So we have another one, um, this is, was funded in twenty twenty-three, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so this is a direct in-stream project along, I don't wanna say the same, but a similar reach of Upper Rattlesnake Creek, installing post-assisted log structures, piles at a bunch of locations, falling trees, uh, removing debris, normally in these in-stream projects, if they can, they will remove fill, they will remove railroad ties, they'll remove irrigation pipes, cause they're just, you know, they're, they're not new, they're old, they've been there fifteen, a hundred years, this particular irrigation pipe was deemed basically toxic, if they were to keep it in, it would have just flooded the stream. And it's a new project, so not a whole lot to report on it, um, but here's some more pictures of the reach. Looks very similar, cause it is, it's, it's, it's the same reach of Upper Rattlesnake Creek, basically. Very pretty. Gotta make it out there. So the three, the three projects that we have next are all basically from former Northwestern Lake all the way down to the Columbia, I'm gonna start I'm gonna start trying to make it west, east, north, south, and I present these projects. So the first one is, this was a, a basically a wholesale planting and weed control project on the area of former Northwestern Lake. I guess there were, there were previous planting efforts in the past by different organizations, and they sort of failed, they didn't catch. So there are areas of, 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 of that stream corridor that are just barren and not planted. Right, so, um, also the removal of, um, I guess people left, you know, uh, plastic tree containers, whatever the heck you call them, they put around the trees and their last left plastic bags and stuff from these planting efforts. So it was forty-five K from twenty twenty, um, to sort of do this, uh, planting and weed control. Um, the problem was, it hit some snags because, uh, basically they weren't granted a water right to bring, you know, to, to water from the stream, so they planted the, the Scamania, uh, county side of the river, and they wanted to plant more, but they couldn't, cause they couldn't track, they couldn't track enough water, basically, cause they were granted that water right. And even then, uh, revegetation program, uh, projects take a long time, because you basically gotta wait for the trees to catch, essentially. Right, so it's still going on, um, there's been no cost amendment, which is the good, you know, they can do as many time sentences as they want, as long as there's not a cost amendment, right, presumably. Right, so it's still going on, we're waiting to see if the trees catch. Here's a picture, um, a sort of low-res picture of sort of the, you know, the barren, um, stretch of the river. And there are some little trees trying to catch next to these old stumps that are all dead. There'll be two more, um, I actually gave an update on this project to the previous board a little while ago, it's a project that got completed in the middle of twenty twenty-four, but it's fairly significant, so I wanted to reintroduce it to the new board. This was a conservation assessment that, um, Underwood Conservation District did in order to map out a parcel, um, from basically Northwestern Lake down to the former Connaught Dam site, that would, um, basically be sold to a prospective owner. So they, you know, parcellized it, because the problem was, there was um, something like fifty-five cabins owned by, um, uh, Conla, the cabins of Northwestern Lake Association, right? And, uh, basically trying to maximize the amount of, um, restoration that can be acquired, or restoration, uh, land that can be acquired, right, conservation lands. So they went through all the zoning, they worked with planning staffs of both county and, and Conla, and, um, what happened was, it started off as basically just a design, right, for this parcellization, and then in twenty twenty-three, Pacific, yes, sir.
Uh, how much more presentation do you have beyond?
I got about fifty slides.
White salmon, okay, can, can you come back right after lunch?
Absolutely.
With that?
Yeah.
You'll finish this? I, I, I'm not sure, our eleven o'clock meeting, if that's gonna go an hour, but I assume it may, I mean, we might as well count.
We are here whenever you need us.
Yeah, why don't you come back at one, if that's okay, a little bit more.
Yeah. Sounds good.
It's hard like to hear.
Absolutely, thank you all.
Well, thank you, Keaton.
Yep, we'll be back.
So who was burning the midnight oil last night?
Well, we've been working on this, oh, well, I was here late.
Yeah. So, uh, I, I would like to ask the board if we can take a seven-minute recess?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Okay, we'll take a recess, then we'll come back and then we'll be meeting with prosecuting attorney, and then at that time, I will leave. An executive session, just to let the public know that.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll call the meeting, the Clicky Tech County Board of Commissioners back, we have Department update with prosecuting attorney. Like to go into executive session, give an update?
Uh, it would be an update from the office of the prosecuting attorney, but, uh, there are a couple items that we'd like to discuss on the executive.
Okay, uh, fifteen minutes be adequate, so that'd be under in accordance with R C W forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, I, is that correct? To discuss threatened pending litigation. So we'll go into executive session for fifteen minutes.
I'm gonna go ahead and shut down Zoom, and, um, are you going to come back after executive session, or are you going to break for lunch?
Well, since I mentioned that we probably wouldn't come back till one, uh, I think after this, then we will, we will not return till one.
Okay. Okay, actually won't be team.
This is, uh, do we need to, uh, make a motion on that? Or make a motion that we go into executive session and we'll return at one P M?
And I'll second?
Yeah.
All those in either.
Sorry. Okay, motion.